Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, May 24th. Please rise for a moment of silence. Have a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson.
Here.
Carmody.
Here.
Fishbein.
Here.
Laughlin.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
And Chairman Cervone.
Here. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through DD.
Moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. I understand there's going to be, I think, two abstentions or maybe a no vote. So, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I abstain from the consent agenda due to the bid waivers for Eversource on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Carmody. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No.
We have six ayes, so the motion passes. That was no from Counselor Fishbein and from Counselors Zandry.
Thank you.
Item four, there were no items removed from consent, unless I missed it. Item five, public question and answer, period. Mr. Gross, nobody is fighting you for the mic.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. On the budget question tonight, to the chair, to the comptroller for the first part of it, the mayor has relied on reserves over all these years, and he moves money back and forth into the budget every year. Do you have any idea where the budget sits now for this year? Are we in the red or black at this point?
It's impossible to tell at this point. It's too early.
Okay, we haven't, okay. All right. Maybe the council, I don't know if the council can get better answer out of that than the public. Because, you know, the mayor has been adverse to using the surplus for to smooth out the budget when it comes. The mayor's had, been in a unique position for many of these years. He's had the ability to balance budgets, spend money because he's had a $12 million fund from CRA over these last few years, that he's taken that money out and has bought things with, to try and balance his budget. So what that has done to the mayor, for the mayor, and to a lesser degree the council, is he hasn't looked for ways to save money. He's done nothing over all these years to go out to bid for, say, a third-party administrator, which is for insurance, or even to question a third-party administrator to come in. When I've asked about it in the past, the mayor said, "It's too difficult to do. We have unions. Other towns do it." It doesn't hurt to call Aetna or one of the other big boys out there besides Blue Cross. West Hartford did it a few years ago, and when they did it, they were going to go with Aetna. Blue Cross lowered their rates. So it's, you know, you're pitting big boys against each other, and that's how, that's what happens. The mayor hasn't, he's had the ability, and the council's had the ability, for health insurance to go through the state. The mayor said recently, "It's too rich of a plan," but he hasn't looked at it. I wish the council, hopefully this year, will at least go to, I don't know if we're still members of the group that Attorney Fishbein was talking about, CM, whatever, CMMA or whatever it is, and get, and have them help you get a quote. Many towns are going to it. And so the mayor said, "Unions also." But if other towns are doing it, we're not unique. We have unions. Other towns have unions. If the plan's too rich, then it's too rich. And I don't know what he means by too rich. Is the plan too good, or is it cost too much? If it's too good, who cares? The employees are getting a better, better insurance for less money to the town. Who cares? That's good for the employees, employers, employees. Maybe you'll keep them longer if they want to stay. The pension is another area where we're not doing what we should be doing. We don't have, we have a philosophy of just buying mutual funds and bonds. Well, the world doesn't work that way anymore. The amount of money the town has, we have hundreds of millions of dollars in a pension fund. We should have an advisor. We should be doing private equity, as all the big boys are doing. That's where you make your money. Again, the mayor hasn't had to do any of this because he's had that 12 million sitting there, and nobody puts his feet to the fire. And I hope the council will do something about these few things to save the taxpayers some money. I mean, can the council initiate some of these things? Can the council actually call up CMA or whatever it is and get, have them do the health insurance? Go out and get some bids for TPAs. That doesn't cost anything. Go out and talk to pension companies from, that do other towns, that do private equity and stuff like that. It doesn't cost us anything to do it, but maybe we could get better returns, and then we wouldn't be in this unique position at this time in the budget, where you're scrambling for a million dollars, which is small, or $2 million. It's a small amount of money, but these things could save that type of money easily and save more. And if you multiply it year after year, it could be tens of millions of dollars. Well, I don't know, I don't, I'm going to try and word it in a way that nobody takes offense to it, but I hear a couple giggles up there. I'm not looking. Because if you don't override the veto, all you're doing is demonstrating your loyalty to the mayor, I feel. You, you're not putting the responsibility of the citizens first. Every, this is, this has got to be one of the worst times financially for a lot of people. The way inflation is now, the mayor always has talked Chicken Little, "The sky's falling, the sky's falling." 2007, 2008, it was falling, and now we're going to see it again. Inflation's rampant. Everybody knows what gas costs, et cetera, food costs, et cetera. So maybe it's only $25 or $50 or $75, but that's a lot of money to some people. And also, you know, people talk about, well, renters, they don't get hit by it. They will. The owner of the property is going to pass those costs on. They're not going to eat them. Their costs are going up. So I would hope that the three counselors that we talked about, that vetoed it before, talked about vetoing it, would think about everybody in town. And the amount of money for, I know that the comptroller talked about the rating agencies. It's such a small amount that it's going to be. And it's the mayor's fault that if we borrow money at excessive rates now, he had every opportunity to borrow money for the pool when rates were zero or 1% and didn't do it. He had opportunities to start doing, raising funds for the police station, hasn't done it. Now we're going to be paying higher rates. So because of his failure to plan, we're going to, it's going to cost the citizens of Wallingford more than trying to help them out for the million dollars that hopefully you will see your way to override his veto. Thank you.
Anyone else? There being none, I think you've had nine minutes.
Well, the second question. Well, the veto's a very important thing because--
You already talked about that.
I understand, but you brought it up. You had nine minutes. It's important because it affects everybody's pocket.
What I brought up, I didn't bring up the veto. I brought up nine minutes.
Okay.
And that was probably the last three minutes of your speech.
Okay, but it was all, no, it all has to do with the veto because of the way you haven't saved money over all these years and hasn't tried--
What does that have to do with nine minutes? You really lost me.
Okay. But what I want to say now was that with the ARPA, I just want to be, the council be aware, and I'm sure you saw it in the papers, that the state and the feds have instituted two new programs, renters reimbursement back and homeowners reimbursement back. So for homeowners, so if you want to help, get the word out that these programs are now available, because the way ARPA's going, it's going to be months before anything happens, and they can, people could be evicted in that timeframe. But there's programs the state's providing to help these people out that are falling behind on homeowners and on renters' payments. Thank you.
All right, there being no further interest from the public, I close the public question and answer period. Moving along the agenda, item six has been withdrawn. Item seven has been withdrawn from this evening's meeting, both of them. Item eight is discussion and action regarding the mayoral veto of the 2223 adopted budget. Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to override the veto of the 2223 budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. Counselor Tada.
Thank you. I have a, I have a whole list of things I wanted to talk about, but I think a lot of them were already set at the last meeting, so I don't want to rehash everything. So I think I'll, I'll just keep it simple. The first thing I just want to address is the, the cost difference between the two budgets. So we keep hearing a lot about saving $25. It's actually more than that. So there's a spread between the two. So the mayor's budget will cost the average household $99, whereas the council budget saves $25. So there's a spread of about $125 there. And that's the average house. I believe it was assessed at about 190, if I recall correctly. So many, many families in this town are, you know, have homes that are above that, and so the 125 then becomes, you know, double or triple or more of that. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear on the spread between the two. It's not 25. It's, the mayor's would cost 99, and ours would save 25 for the average household. You know, right now, it's a time in, in history where unprecedented gas prices, fuel prices, oil, people are, are struggling financially with just the cost of everyday living. So I think even for those of us who maybe don't think this is a huge amount, you know, at certain times, maybe we do something that's a little bit symbolic, or just a little bit of a help, just to show that we are doing everything that we can to help the people in this town. And that brings me to just my last point, which is the biggest, the biggest point I want to make. There is absolutely no difference in services in these two budgets. None. We are covering the exact same services that are in the mayor's budget. The only choice here is to pay more or to pay less. It's funny, my, my husband tells me a story about his grandmother was a seamstress, and she worked in a factory where she would make shirts. And after they were done making the shirts, they had the tags from different companies. And the high-end tags would go in some shirts, and the cheaper, low-end brands would go in the other shirts. And she was making the exact same shirts, but depending on where they were sold, they would charge a different price for them. And I was thinking of that with this, because we are getting the exact same services in both budgets. It's not like we, you know, cut the band program, or we, we're not going to have a football team next year for Board of Ed. Everything is exactly the same. It's just how we're funding it. And so the choice here tonight is really, do we charge people more or do we charge people less? And in my opinion, like I said, this point in history and with these two budgets, I'm choosing to vote to override and charge our citizens and businesses less. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I've been relatively quiet through this budget process, paying attention to the public comment. The public comment consistently asked for more services. I, I know the council-approved budget doesn't change services, but the council, the public comment was looking for more services. This budget, as proposed either way, contains five new positions in town and four promotions. There's two new positions in the police department, two new positions in the fire department, one new position at Public Works, and then two promotions in the fire department and two promotions in the police department. So there are increases in spending there. There are increases in spending to keep up with all of the contractual wage increases in the approved union agreements. What the council's budget has done is, to use Mr. Shortell's phrase, is there's a further starving of the cap and non-recurring fund. I think the practice that we have followed for decades of funding capital projects with the money from the electric division is a good practice that we should keep up. The council's approved budget significantly increases the spending of ARPA funds, and I am more interested in waiting to hear about the need of ARPA money before the town spends it on itself. I understand the mayor's proposal had some ARPA spending in it, but I think the councils went much, much deeper. The mayor does rely upon the unallocated reserve. His, his budget was $6 million from the unallocated reserve to balance the budget and reduce the tax increases. The proposal from the council is to take one and a half more million out of that. My issue with that is, and looking, taking a look to the future approach, is that we are, we are going to be bonding. We have a police station project we're working on. We've acquired a building. It's going to cost at least $20 million to further outfit the building. We're going to bond for that. So the bond rating becomes important. So when the comptroller tells me that we are at $14 million, I believe, in unallocated reserve, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Okay. And with a $180 million annual budget, we should be looking more towards an $18 million unallocated reserve. What the council's changes to the budget have done have further challenged our ability to try and get back that $4 million into the unallocated reserve. So those are my issues with the council's budget. So that being said, Counselors Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, too, am going to try and keep my, my comments brief because I, I said a lot when we were going through the budget piece, but there, there are a few things that I do want to make points on. You know, one of the, one of the big issues that, that we've, we've had recently, over the past, I don't know, I'd say five to eight years, was money coming out of Hartford. And one of the big issues we had not too long ago was that we didn't get the type of funding out of Hartford when they started cutting funding to all towns. And one of the chief arguments used was Wallingford is in far better shape than anybody else. And I, and that is a double-edged sword, of course. Being, being prudent on our spending and fiscally responsible puts you in a bad place. It's kind of, anybody's individual household is like that. When you make your plans and you save your money, you don't get the opportunity to leverage other benefits that are, that are made to other people. Some people get these benefits because of the situation they're in, and other people lose the margin because they've just simply saved too much, whether it's an earned income credit for children, or something else might be going on. Your salary's too high. You've got too much in savings, too much in retirement. So we, we have this problem, quote-unquote, problem in Wallingford, and I'm, I'm happy to have the problem, be blunt about it. But it doesn't mean that we can't take the opportunity to try to figure out where that balance is. A lot of the argument has been, is there ways to return some of this money to the taxpayers? Anytime you're trying to do any type of real rebate, you've got a ton of overhead, postage, administration. It's ridiculous. I don't, I don't know how many times in my life I've received a $2 rebate that, that came with a 50 cent stamp on it. It's, it's incredibly foolish to try to, to peddle money back to anybody in that fashion. When you have an opportunity to try to do it by putting downward pressure on the taxes, that's something I think we should engage in, and we've done it two years successfully. I'd like to point out specifically, as being a Democrat, that I'm, I'm about the, the only person up here, you know, my colleagues to the right included, that, that will get chastised from both sides of the argument. If there's more money being pulled out of the, out of the taxpayers because of a tax increase, we're the tax and spend side of the fence. And then when, when we're part of the body that is trying to make the argument of how we can put downward pressure, then we're just not looking at the whole picture and being smart about things. And we should support a budget that's got a tax increase in it. So we get slammed either way. And that's, that's unfortunate, because all of us, even the people up here that don't support the council budget, looked at it and said, "This is a specific reason or reasons why." Nobody, I don't feel anybody specifically is just toeing a line. I think there's mindsets up here that have built over years, and they're, they're sticking, sticking to it. But I think there's been a lot of exercise in really trying to come to the middle on it. And, and I feel it's really unfortunate if anybody disagrees with that. Just to kind of wrap it up, ARPA funding, the mayor put it in the budget. We added to that, yes, those of us that, that worked towards changing it for the council amended a budget. It was there to leverage. The mayor leveraged it. So all we did in theory was improve upon what the mayor was doing. Now, if you want to argue we overdid it, that's, that's one stance you could take. With respect to the fund balance, the points have been made that it could potentially impact, it could potentially impact our future rate to borrow money against. We had projects we could have bonded over the past two years at 1.5% and 2.5%. Right now, it sits between 3.5% and 4%. We discussed this last week. The lowering of our bond rating would not necessarily add to any more debt, debt encumbrance. The last time that I looked, we had this conversation when we fell from AAA rating, the difference was 2 tenths of, of a percent. Waiting one year to do some of this work has rate, has been a change of a solid full 1%. So I don't see how we can argue. I'm concerned about the potential of a bond rating being lowered and being hit with 2 tenths to 5 tenths of a percent change, when we've blown 1% and 2% by waiting, on top of the fact that inflation has pounded costs on everything else. We will not get a chance to do anything close to this on the next budget, next year. Inflation is way too high. Salary pressures are, are way too much. Consumables like heating oil that the town utilizes, we're going to get killed with that. I don't see any possible way to hold down costs next year. It's, it's going to be crazy. This is the last opportunity to do something like this, and I really hope that we have an opportunity to support it up here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, I just want to frame the argument here, because I think that, you know, you read some things in the paper about who's reckless and all that. I don't think the mayor's reckless. I don't think the, the three counselors that I think are going to vote against the, the veto override are reckless. I think that we have, there's a philosophical difference in how the, we should be handling the town's finances. And the philosophical, philosophical difference comes down to this, is, is a budget, in my eyes, is what you intend to spend in a given budget year on services. The Wallingford budget is more like a worst-case scenario, right? We, no department, except for the fire department, ever goes over their salary budget, right? And it's very rare for a department to need money outside of their budget. In fact, when we, last year, we took money out of the Public Works overtime fund in an effort to, to do some things with the budget, and the, a big, you know, there was a big issue about it. Money ended up going back in, and then they still ended up like a half a million dollars in the black at the end of the year. So philosophically, the budget's designed to sort of have money socked away in a bunch of different areas. So when we talk about, you know, the concerns, the concern from the administration is always concerns about the fund balance and how it affects our bond rating. But where would you go in the budget to figure out where that money goes to help the bond rating or help the, the general fund balance? So it's not like there's a line in the budget that says that this is money that we're setting aside for another purpose. So if the mayor were to say he's had enough of this nonsense, and he decides to retire, like midterm, and Mayor Cervone takes over, and Mayor Cervone says, "I'm going to spend the budgets as they were written," we're suddenly going to end up with like a $6 million hole, right? Because we've budgeted for way more than we ever intend to spend. So I think the, the philosophy from the, the six that, that sort of worked on the, the compromise was the idea that we don't budget for what we intend to spend. We budget for something else. And perhaps we need to budget for what we intend to actually spend. So when we look at the budget, if we want to set money aside for the, to, to help the bond rating, I think that that's an admirable goal. And I think that you could do that, and you could put a line in the budget that says money, you know, to, to set aside for the, to improve the fund balance. But we don't do that. It's, it's sort of like, like play numbers, right? Like at, at home, no one says, you know, "My mortgage is X and my car payment's X, but I'm going to set aside this other amount of money for the car payment and the mortgage." If you have extra money left over, you know, you do with it what you do. So I guess the, you know, we, we talked about services, right? And the budget is increasing services in sort of very meager amounts. And so, you know, the, the chairman noted that people in the public, and I hear this all the time, are looking for additional services. But we're essentially just keeping pace. You know, the, the positions we're adding in the police department are more a reflection of the town population, increased crime rates in the area, you know, some of the other, other sort of regular things. We're not really improving anything. We're just trying to, trying to hang on to what we've got. So I think the budget, if we're hanging on to what we've got, the budget should reflect a hanging on to what we've got and not improving services, which, because we're really not. So that's where I am. Philosophically, we're just in two different places. That's it. And so I hope, you know, going forward, the mayor seems to have a willingness to work on this, and this is not, this is not a one-year problem, right? This is a multi-year problem. Money's never been cheaper than it was in the past two years. So we talked about things that we need to bond, you know, or pre-pandemic, let's put it like that, or at the beginning of the pandemic. Money's never been cheaper, right? So now we talk about the things we're going to bond now. Well, those are missed opportunities, because whatever we bond now, regardless of what our bond rating is, is going to cost more because money's more money now. So we tried to hedge our bets in the past by, you know, improving the fund balance. It didn't get us anywhere, because now we find ourselves in the situation we're in today, where through no fault of ours, because the economy is what it is, it's going to, you know, bonding anything's going to cost more. So I just ask the, the three that I think aren't going to side with us, just to, just to reconsider, and the door is always open if you ever want to, you know, I'd love to talk about budget. So anyone that wants to talk about budget, I'm happy to. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishbein.
So that was a good opening, because I have some of the same points, but I just want to get a little bit deeper. So, Mr. Senna, if I may, do we budget for a surplus?
No, we do not. We budget to eat into the surplus by $6 million.
Okay, but when we start at the, the beginning of the day, putting a budget together that culminates in an April 1st announcement, it appears traditionally we are starting with, the expenditure number is wrong, the revenue number is wrong, and therefore we have to take our own money and put it in there in order to balance it. But traditionally also, for the most part, we've never needed that money. So you would agree with everything I just said, or?
Not necessarily.
Okay, what part?
When you're saying that numbers that we're starting with are wrong. We start with an expenditure budget, and then we do the revenue.
The mic's not picking you up, Mr. Senna.
We start, we get to the total expenditure number, and then we decide what, where the revenue is going to be, and then that $6.4 million is to balance the budget. So there's not enough, in the, in the budget, there's not enough revenue to cover-- So there's not enough, in the budget, there's not enough revenue to cover all the expenditures, which is what the $6.4 million is used for.
And when is the last time, traditionally, I mean, since I've been up here, so we'll say for a little over a decade, we're taking in excess of $5 million from reserves for the budget. Is that fair to say? At least?
I'm not understanding the question, so.
So we always take multiple millions of dollars in the mayor's budget in order to balance it along the lines you just said. And when traditionally is the last time that we utilized 75% of that at the end of the year?
The last two years, I think we've eaten into it, but, I mean, the budget's just a plan.
When's the last time, I mean, I'm being conservative, 75%?
I don't think we've ever used 75%.
Yeah. 90%?
I don't have the, it all in front of me, but I don't, probably never.
Yeah, in fact, many years, we didn't use any of it, and we added to the surplus at the end of the year, correct?
Like I said, it's just a roadmap. If more revenues come in than budgeted, then it can add to a surplus. If you don't spend everything, you know, when you're setting the budget, you're setting the maximum amount that the town can spend.
But to be intellectually honest, and I mean no disrespect, please, why not just take that money out? If you don't, if traditionally you don't need it, then zero is a pure zero. Any variance is an actual deficit or surplus. So that's, when we're looking at the philosophy, why not, isn't that how businesses do it?
That's how it works. That's exactly how it works now when you're dealing with the actuals. This is just the budget. It's the framework of what, it gives you the max of what each department can spend and what we think the revenue comes in. What comes into, you know, there's never going to be a year where we spend every dollar and we get in the exact amount.
Agreed, but it's a barometer on actual fiscal health if you're dealing with an actual zero. Because on July 1, you're fooling yourself. You have millions of dollars in the bank that you haven't gotten through tax revenue because you've taken reserves and you've shifted it, right? And as, I mean, over time, that $6, $7 million is more than likely going to exceed your revenues or your expenditures as the year passes. So to be honest to the system, I would think that you would want an actual zero. So I guess that's where the tug of war is because, you know, part of the mayor's objection to this is the amount of reserves that is being used in the modified budget. And what I'm hearing is that, well, is that number based upon a calculation?
The 6.4?
Yes.
It's not based on a calculation.
Okay, so why isn't it 6.3?
It could be. It's, you know, when the mayor and I are going through to see what the taxes are going to be, that's when we're looking at that number. So, you know, we've been trying, if you want to look back in the history, we've been trying, when I got here, it was $7 million 12 years ago. And we worked to get this number down, 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 down. We got it to almost 4.6. And then at some point, I don't know exactly which budget it was, but it got, I believe the council put more money into that and that budget got through. And then we went up at that 6.4 number, which, you know, to be honest, I don't even like that number. I think we should be working to get that number down lower.
Well, I think it should be zero, quite frankly, based upon the traditional, you know, because what I'm hearing is that the 6.4 is based upon leprechaun dust or something like that.
If you want to make that a zero, then that's $6 million we have to raise in taxes to balance the budget.
No, because traditionally, the expenditures don't raise to that level. So the answer is if you're going to decrease the revenue and be intellectually honest with regard to that side, then you got to sharpen your pencil and look at the other side. You know, I brought in here a couple of years ago in the revenue budget. I don't know if you watched that meeting or, you know, but Jim Bose was there. And we looked at that particular line over a five-year pattern. And we showed that traditionally, that particular revenue line, just taking that line, was over budgeted. And, you know, I made a motion to reduce it based upon the traditional, and I, you know, heard the sky was falling and that kind of stuff. But no, just because you cut the fake number, because once again, it's not based upon anything, that we haven't needed traditionally from the revenue side, then you got to look at the expenditure side and say, where are we saying that our expenses are going to be high? And they have not been. Because that's the only result of the tradition, traditional budgets, is that the expenditures are overestimated, you know? And that's, you know, you can have a philosophical difference, but I'd like to have a different, you know, discussion on substance. But if the 6.4 is not based upon a calculation, I become even more opposed to where we are. But that being said, you announced at a meeting recently that you had a discussion with some auditor or something who had expressed a concern about us taking the 7.9, I think it was, a few years ago.
Not the auditor, the bond.
Okay, the bonding people.
Bond agency.
And in what form was that communication?
That's a phone interview for the bond rating when they're doing the rating.
Okay. And as a result of the concerns that were raised then but not brought to our attention at that point?
I mean, it's a public document.
Well, the phone conversations are public documents?
The rating report.
I understand. So there's a report that says because of this increase in taking from reserves that there was jeopardy?
I'm not 100% sure if the report says that, but, you know, during the phone interview, there was questions regarding that amount. They asked, how much are you, in your next budget, what is your reserve fund balance? The answer was 7.9, and they said, well, what are you going to do to mitigate that? How are you going to replenish that if that gets used?
And what did you say?
I said that we're going to, you know, maintain our conservative budgeting practices that we've always done in the past. So the bond rating agencies like the practice that the town of Wallingford has utilized for the past 20 years.
But isn't the correct answer, I'm not, you know, well, we don't usually use that money anyway. It's a cushion, right?
What that number is, is the charter requires a balanced budget. So you have to put that piece in there to balance the budget.
So we have to take money out of reserves to balance the budget? I don't recall that part of the charter.
I believe the charter says we have to have a balanced budget. So if we have $180 million of expenditures, then we have to show where the $180 million of revenue is coming from.
Okay, but it, I don't disagree with that. But if you have $180 million in revenues and then you budget $180 million in expenditures, that's a balanced budget. But if you budget for $180 million revenues plus $6 million in reserves, well, I mean.
We're budgeted for $174 of revenue plus the $6 million.
I understand. But looking at the calculation, because a transfer of reserves to the revenue account, in my mind, is not revenue. It's a transfer, right? So you raise money, you spend money, that's a budget, right? So when we say we need to have a balanced budget, we need to show where the money's coming from and where the money's going, right? So what we're saying in the budget is, we'll use your number. $174 million, we are going to get from the state, from, you know, out of town things, taxpayers, right? That's revenue. At the end of the day, you're only going to spend $174 in expenditures, no matter what the document says. Because more than likely, you're going to put the $6 million back into reserves. That's traditionally what you did.
But there's no guarantee that we're going to get the whole $174 million. It's a budget.
Understood. So... Then why not, I mean, we have the concept of suspension, where if you have things that are, I mean, we know what we're getting in state revenue through the budget that was just adopted, right? We can sort of cross our fingers and say we're going to get that. You know, there's other stuff that are out there for grants that we might not get. I can understand that stuff. But then you can position yourself where you don't make that allotment or you cushion contingency for those items. And then if that item is not paid for by, let's say, the state, then you can expend the money from contingency.
That is correct, but in the proposed budget, the contingency was cut.
Understood. But we don't know how much of this revenue from outside of the four walls of Wallingford is in jeopardy either. We are unable, that's not part of the budget book?
As I, you know, as I keep saying, that the budget is just a plan. As soon as it's adopted, anything can happen to make it go wrong, make it go right.
Oh, agreed. But here tonight, we're talking about two budgets that achieve the same goal but by taking a different path. And the major part of those two paths that's being attacked here is the amount of money that's being taken from reserves. I mean, that's essentially where we're at. So if the number in the mayor's budget is fantasy and based upon tradition is never utilized, then I'm trying to figure out why there's a objection to the other number other than this discussion with the bonding council, so.
You can cut $6 million in spending.
You could if you looked at the traditional expenditure lines, but that's not what has been chosen to be done here, so. Mayor, you sent us a letter on May 11th, I believe the day after the council adopted the budget, that was adopted that night. And it says, "Your efforts to contact one another and reach conclusions regarding the budget is a productive approach. It would be helpful if upon reaching a conclusion imposition concerning the budget, you would contact the mayor's office and discuss possibilities of compromise. If we don't make that effort, we will never know what we might have achieved." So sitting here today, I mean, I think it was two years ago, we set a precedent where we modified the budget after the May, the date. So we do have the ability to modify the two budgets that are before us. And I guess, do you have any suggestions? I mean, do you object to us having a zero tax increase? Or, you know, do you have proposals for us in the spirit of compromise? Because I just don't know why this letter was sent.
The letter was sent to highlight, at the point you know you have a consensus, there's an agreement to move forward before acting on it, then see if there is room for compromise. So we were looking at 6.4 million to be the ceiling on taking from the reserves. Could that be 6.9? Well, it's certainly possible. I mean, these numbers aren't in stone. But when we add another $1.5 million, that's when I think we're stretching to the breaking point the ability to properly fund the budget. Once the vote is taken, we fall under the charter and the process moves forward.
Why, I understand.
There's only an action from the executive branch as far as vetoing, and there's no ability to get through this process once something's been adopted. But prior to the adoption, you know, having a discussion about the ability to increase figures a little bit here or there, you know, that's possible. But, you know, what gets left out of the discussion right now is, why is it the credit rating agencies don't look at it the same way? They're an outside, objective, well-informed group, but they watch what goes on. And they raise red flags when they see directions that are harmful to a community's fiscal stability. So are they all wrong? I mean, they know that we don't spend everything every year. They seem to feel that's appropriate because we remain capable of managing finances. Are they completely wrong? I mean, a lot of this is judgment, but their judgment should count too. And their judgment is looking at the town's overall fiscal strength. So, you know, I think certainly we could, in a timely way, make an effort to compromise in where the numbers are. I'm not going to sit here and say it has to be 6.4. But it's got to show a serious effort at bringing down the expressed dependence upon the reserves. And Mr. Senna did let everyone know about that in the course of the discussions previously at the meeting on the construction of the budget. There's... If there were a rulebook that said, you know, this amount of money for this, you know, it would be easy. There isn't. So as I've stated before, we're trustees over public money. And to the extent we become willing to gamble more as far as whether we will receive all the revenues we get or not, that's going to be noticed by others on the outside, like the credit rating agencies. And they have a legitimate view to say, this is a good risk, that isn't a good risk. So that's our effort. That's our effort to meet objective standards that reassure the public that we're handling their money in an appropriate way. I think the town has been successful. And in one sense, it's good we're arguing about how much reserves we have. But that issue should take just as much concern and discussion as being more risky. We're supposed to have a 10%, about a 10% credit rating reserve. We don't anymore. Down to 14 something. Instead of the 18 million it should be, it's down to 14. The credit rating agencies are watching that. Over the years, they watch newspaper articles. They are, they make sure they're informed about what the municipalities are doing. And as far as revenues coming in, yeah, you can rely upon the state at times, and at times you can't. We've fallen well short in some areas in the past and had to do a bit of scrambling. Sometimes it's the education cost, what is that, the education?
Education cost sharing?
Yeah, the cost sharing percentages that reduce the overall. overall money that the, the state provides, which is over twenty million dollars. So that's, that's been reduced by taking money out for education cost sharing. So, you know, it's, it's, it's not all guaranteed. And to the extent that we can show that we're aware of those things and not, not act in a more risky manner threatening deficits, naturally, those from outside are going to say, well, that's the way it should be managed. If for no other reason than this is public money. If I want to risk my personal money, okay. But this is public money. So now you have the fiduciary standards. And I really feel that's, that's the role we play. We're fiduciaries over other people's money, and we need to, we certainly need to be well aware and, and as comfortable as possible with the standards of credit rating agencies, auditors, others who look at us from afar and determine what they think or don't want to think about us.
So I disagree procedurally. You know, as I said before, we set a precedent, I believe it was two years ago. We adopted a budget. We got two point four million dollars more from the state than we originally budgeted. And after the, the date that's in the charter, we adopted a subsequent budget. So we could do that, following that procedure. Any statements by the, the bonding company, I would hope if there was any level of concern, that those are available somewhere in writing. Because an offhand comment by someone on the phone, I mean, I trust Mr. Senna. But, you know, certainly if somebody is unwilling to put something in writing, I don't know that I can reasonably rely upon, upon that as holding water. And especially, I mean, nothing was brought to our attention at the time that that happened. I would have wanted to know about that. And, and the third thing is, well, Mr. Senna, I mean, I think you were asked earlier tonight, where are we in this budget? Are we at a surplus, are we a deficit? And, and you said you didn't know, so...
It's almost impossible to know. If I, if I ran your report right now, it's going to show that we're in the positive because the Board of Ed pays ten million dollars of summer payrolls the last week of the year. So until all the revenue's in and all the expenditures are in, that's the only way you're, you're going to know.
But I'm just, you know, procedurally, I mean, is there a period of time during the year that you traditionally look at that? And, and, you know, and say, well, if the year is to end, you know, today, would we be restoring that money? Because if, if it's so much of a concern with the bond rating agency, I'd be looking at that and making sure that we're going to be putting whatever we bonded, what we, we took from reserves this year back into that account to avail their concerns. If I'm ignoring it, I, you know, and I don't know what you're doing.
We monitor the budget practically daily. But to, to know where we're going to end up, there, there's just no way to predict it.
Okay, but we're, based upon all things considered, you know, with credits and all of that stuff, you reasonably think that we're in the black as of today?
I would say, if I ran your report right now, it's going to tell you we're in the black. Are we going to end there? I don't know. So, and there's one other, you know, we, we are, the budget that we're currently in has a built-in nine hundred thousand dollar revenue hole in it. So we're, we're going to, no matter what, we're going to be nine hundred thousand short on the revenue. Because when ARPA first came out, Mr. Boz put in a line item for revenue loss before the standards came in. And, you know, we've, we're not going to be using that revenue in this budget. So I don't know where we're going to wind up, but we're gonna, you know, there is a revenue hole in the budget.
So with that revenue hole, then we would have an expenditure overage?
We wouldn't have an expenditure overage, we would have a shortage in revenue.
Okay, but I thought we had a balanced budget. So if, if, if nine hundred thousand dollars was shown as revenue, you'd have to credit that with expenditures of nine hundred thousand dollars in order to have a balanced budget, right?
The, the budget is balanced when you adopt it. So when it was adopted, it was budgeted. Like I said, it's, it's a roadmap. As soon as the year starts, anything can happen, just like, so...
Okay, so please, explain, would, did I say something wrong, or I'm just...
But it's not an expenditure overage, because we didn't spend more than we budgeted for. We're just receiving less revenue than we budgeted for.
But in that budget, take everything out of the budget except for that revenue. Just one line. You've got nine hundred thousand dollars of revenue. Right? That's what was budgeted.
Correct.
Okay. So on the expenditure side, what actions were credited against the revenue in order to balance it?
There are no actions needs to be taken to, to do that. The budget was passed, where whatever the number was, we're allowed to spend that number. We're, you know, we're, we're never going to hit it because we budget every employee salary for the full year, whether they're there half the year. So there is, you, you guys are correct. There is going to be surpluses in the major departments because there's never full staff, but that's how we budget.
So that was where we started, do we budget for a surplus? So we do budget for a surplus?
We're not budgeting for a surplus, we're budgeting for positions that are authorized.
Okay, but, and this has been a recurring discussion for many years. Authorized, but not reasonably anticipated to be filled, expended, that kind of stuff. And I, I, I recognize that. But I'm still focused on this nine hundred thousand dollars. I don't know how, I don't know, maybe I'm being dense. Please, somebody's going to clip that out.
Too late.
How do we have nine hundred thousand dollars of revenue in a budget that is balanced without showing nine hundred thousand dollars in expenditures?
The, the revenue doesn't match up dollar for dollar with the expenditures. You can't say this nine hundred thousand was spent for the police department and this, for this department. So in the prior year's budget, from the guidance that, when we made the budget, we thought that there was going to be possibility to use ARPA funds, the revenue loss component. So when we made that budget, that was a revenue line item. So that's part of the revenue. So now we get into the year, and we realize, oh, that we're not really supposed to use the money for that. So that revenue is not going to be taken into the general fund, but that has no effect on what we're allowed to spend.
I got to tell you, I still don't understand, because I'm looking at the budget from last year. There was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, a seven hundred and seventy-seven million dollars shown as revenue. A hundred and seventy-seven million dollars shown as expenditures.
Part of the one seventy-seven revenue was the nine hundred thousand.
Understood. So there has to be, logically, some portion, somewhere in the expenditures, and it could be in various departments, that's attributable to the nine hundred thousand dollars in revenue. There has to be. Otherwise, you have an unbalanced budget. You have monies that's coming in that's not going to be expended.
You can't put dollar for dollar the revenue side to the expenditure side.
Okay, well...
That would be like, you know, I'm, I'm just going to make an example about you saying, buy four thousand of taxes this year, I, I wanted that used for my salary. If the taxes get collected, it pays for the whole budget. So you, you can't take that revenue piece and say, that's attributed to this expense.
Is it attributable to any expense?
It's attributed to a whole hundred and seventy-seven million.
No, it's not, it can't be. Nine hundred thousand dollars cannot be attributable to the whole hundred and seventy-seven million. It can only be attributable to nine hundred thousand dollars of the hundred and seventy-seven million.
So if I could help?
Yeah, sure.
We don't have a board of education tax, we don't have a police tax, we don't have a fire tax. We, we don't have a, a public works tax. The point is, i- if, if that's how we taxed, then, then we would take in that nine hundred specifically for one purpose and spend it that way. We have a general revenue budget, and then the general revenue is spread out through the expenditures.
I understa-, okay, I understand in that, in that vein. It's, it's not, you know, that, okay, I, that does, I understand what you're saying. But nine hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. And I don't recall any regular budgetary item in this budget that was nine hundred thousand dollars, or even close to that, right? Maybe some of the payroll lines.
In this budget, or prior budget?
The one, the nine hundred thousand dollars that we're talking about. So, yeah, it's the budget that we're talking about right now.
Because it's, it's not in this budget.
The budget that we are, we are in, but not the...
Not the one you're talking about now. There's no nine hundred thousand, revenue's not in that budget.
Yeah, in the veto budget that we're talking about here today. We're talking about the budget that was adopted last year that we are in right now.
Correct.
Yes, okay, we're on the same page. While there is no nine hundred thousand dollar expenditure in its whole, to balance it out, there are expenditures that are sprinkled throughout the budget that one could choose to have credited arbitrarily against the nine hundred thousand. You can't pinpoint it, I got what you're saying, right? But then there still has to be some expenditures that, or is that the cushion? Some expenditures that we know just aren't going to be done during this budget. It's not a worry, because we over budgeted, or we under budgeted our expenditures when we started the budget. Is that fair to say?
I don't know if I could say, I, I understand what you're trying to say, but I don't know if I would phrase it that way.
Okay, well, it's...
So, to answer your question, let me put it this way. By going through the accounts, I didn't think, I think that we have enough money that's not going to get spent in payroll, that it wasn't an issue, that we needed to freeze any other expenditures to, to make up for this nine hundred thousand revenue loss.
Yeah, I agree, okay. It's not a concern, because there are other things that are going to mitigate that loss of revenue.
Correct, but it is going to eat into, if, you know, you got, we say that we budget for the, to use the reserves, and we're, we're not going to use it, we put money back in every year. That's going to cut into whatever that was going to come back into you, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Okay, under, understood. And because of where we are in our budgeting processes traditionally, it's of no concern that we've got almost a million dollars in revenue that we're not going to, we can't use for this budget?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's fair, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I, can I make one, one comment? A couple, so we've talked about bonding, and we haven't bonded the money, and we missed the opportunity to bond the money. We can't bond money before the project and the expenditures are happening. Once we bond the money, we have to have it spent within certain guidelines. So the last time we bonded, we bonded money for the police station for what we knew we could spend in that timeframe. There, there was only three point eight million dollars appropriated for that, for the police station. So it's, just because the market was good and it was a great time to bond, I can't just go, sorry, sell twenty million dollars worth of bonds because I don't have the, I can't spend it. So I, I just wanted to point that out. And I, I did want to point out one other thing, too. Mr. Gross, when he was talking about the pension, we have a pension commission, we have a pension advisor, and we have an investment policy that the pension commission follows. So if anyone wants to talk about the pension, feel free to call me or attend one of the commission meetings, but I just wanted to clarify that as well.
Thank you, Counselors Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Senna, real, real quick, just to kind of add to your final point there. There, you're right, you're absolutely right. We can't just go borrow money if we don't have a project to spend it on, an expenditure to use it for. Is it fair to say also that there, within each of the past two budgets, there were capital items that we just purchased with cash? That we could have balled up and bonded?
Our policy is not to bond equipment and vehicles and stuff, so, I mean, that's the capital that...
All right, so that's the policy, but we could have done it. Rates were so ridiculously low, we could have taken advantage by taking those items and rather than buying them with cash, bonded them out?
I believe you, we could have, but it's, you know, are we going to sell twenty million dollar bonds for equipment that doesn't last twenty, twenty years? I mean, that's the, that's the philosophical debate you're going to have to have.
No, and that's fair too, that's fair too. If it's only a, you know, fifteen year piece of equipment or a ten year piece of equipment, you can't do it that way either. I, I agree. But I, I think if, if we, and I don't want to belabor it too long, if, if we looked across the spectrum of all the different things that we could have taken advantage of, there might have been a few of those items to make the number rounder, to make the number more feasible to do. We might have had to put a couple of items in that wouldn't meet the normal mark, but I think we could have taken advantage of that. Especially in those types of, of markets. And I'm not going to harp the community pool thing, because we're either going to, again, we're either going to never do it, or we're going to do it someday for a lot more money, because the, the interest rates have come up on the bonds. But, but thank you for indulging me for a moment, I, I appreciate it. I, I just, I, I, I've always got the numbers handy. So a couple, a couple of items came up in the discussion about, gee, if we really wanted to not use, if we wanted to zero it out and be honest, it would be six point four million. Well, that would be if we wanted to budget the way that we always budget. And I understand it's a moving target, I understand it's a hundred eighty million dollar budget, and that, you know, a one percent rounding error, or trying to hit a moving target, is one point eight million dollars. But we wouldn't have to go and tax everybody at six point four million dollars to do what we're doing with the designated reserves, because we, we've never consumed that all. One point seven four million is all we've ever used at the most. So if we really wanted to make the argument of not using any designated reserves and to truly tax versus what we think we're going to expend, it would only be like a two million dollar number. I just want to ask the mayor quickly, because the comment came up. You know, you, you said, you know, it, it might have been a good thing if, if, when we reached consensus, to maybe open a dialogue to see whether it was flexibility. And the numbers you used tonight was, six point four million was designated reserves that you were comfortable utilizing. It might have been possible to massage it to six point nine or, or some number like, these were the, the amounts that you gave. So you had some consideration for flexibility in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand, but the one point five that we're suggesting, you're indicating that you would not be comfortable with that?
That's correct.
Okay, that's fair, I just, I, I want to ask, I wanted to ask that, because then now my, now my question is going to be, in the 2016, 2017 budget, you designated reserves of four point two million dollars to, to put in in case we needed to use them. And that particular year, we actually used one point four two million of them, which was about thirty-three percent of what you designated. The following year, your designation jumped by three million dollars. You went from a four point two designation all the way up to seven point two. And that was, you know, five, six, six years ago. Why were you comfortable doing that six years ago and not comfortable doing one point five this year?
I'd have to check, I, I doubt that I, I had approved that. I don't think we would have gone in with an additional three million dollars. I, I, I don't. But I'd have to check the history on that.
Your, your designated reserves for the 2016, 2017 budget were four point two million dollars assigned to utilize. And in 2017, 2018 budget, you designated seven point... And in 2017, 2018 budget, you designated seven point two million dollars to utilize if needed.
Because I'd have to check on it. I don't recall any time that we've increased the use of reserves by that amount of money. It, it certainly, as an adopted budget resulted in that, but I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that it was at the, the proposed budget.
I, I, I can tell you, I've been tracking these numbers since 2003. I'm, I'm positive that's the correct amount because I used to sit down every year and go over them. But that aside, even that year, we only used twenty-one point five percent of that designated amount, or one point five four million dollars.
And I, I hear your comments, but they don't apparently meet the standards that outsiders, that is credit rating agencies and perhaps others, they don't view municipal budgets the same way. So, are they completely wrong? I think it's hard to ignore what they're setting a standard for the public to look at as an investor and say they're, they must be completely wrong. I think they see what happens across the state and other states with regard to municipal funding and even state funding. Government funding certainly is subject to and should be a lot of questions because there's an awful lot of bottling going on right now. And how that's going to get paid back is an open question at the federal, state, and ultimately the local level. In that, in that way, we, we, we are in somewhat uncharted territory, especially with the kind of money that's coming out of the federal government. So, I, I think, I think it's important that we keep track of what professionals at other levels are saying when they're looking at the whole dynamic of, of municipal government. This town achieved a triple A credit rating. I think that's a positive thing. We've, we've lost that and I'm concerned about it continuing to deteriorate. Why? Well, you can say, well, it's just philosophy. Well, that may be, but I think it's difficult to tell the public, oh, no, we're doing fine. Uh, we're not viewed as the same kind of credit risk we once were, but we're doing fine, don't worry about it. You know, I worry about it and I think a lot of people do.
I could appreciate that. I mean, and I, and I worry about it as well. And I feel like sitting up here, as you mentioned, you know, we've got a, a responsibility up here with other people's money. And that's really what this comes back down to. I completely acknowledge over the last five years, if you take each year that we actually consume part, some portion of those designated reserves, we've, we've run deficits every year but one. We, we surplus two point four million dollars one year, but it doesn't matter because all the other years together, we have a total deficit over those five years of two point three six million dollars. But that is on the heels of the five years prior where we surplus eight point two eight million dollars. That's other people's money and that's why I'm making a big deal out of the, the twenty five dollars because it's not the twenty five dollars. It's the fact that we've got an opportunity to narrow this thing tighter and make it so that the pressure stays down on the taxpayer. And that is why I'm going to continue to campaign to try to get this done. And, and I appreciate the opportunity to continue to talk about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, uh, you know, I think it's a little unfair for the folks up here to jump at Mr. Sena because I'll, I'll tell you, I had conversations with him during the budget process, um, and I thought that he's, I, you answer questions in a way that's so honest and sort of straightforward that it's, it's very refreshing for someone that sits up here, to be quite frank. So, you know, he doesn't set the philosophy of town government in terms of how we bond and whatnot. He's, he's an accountant and I'm sure he's part of the, part of the process, but I just want to say I think you're doing a great job so far in the time, you know, that you've been here and I really appreciate, uh, what you do for the, for the town and for the council. Point number two is with the regard to the credit rating agencies, we say on the one hand that we need to use the past, which I think is accurate, but we also say that we're in uncharted waters. So, I think both of those statements are true. So, the thing that we've done in the past for, you know, forty years may not necessarily be what gets us to the same spot going forward. There's communities with better credit ratings than us that have different philosophies and there's communities with worse credit ratings that have different philosophies. But it's, so it's, it's not like there's, it's a one size fits all solution, right? I mean, the credit rating agencies, as the mayor points out, are very sophisticated and they look at a lot of factors. So, I think to say that if we do anything but stray from the current course, it's going to lead to absolute ruin, I think is, you know, is, is a little bit of a, of a building of a straw man, I guess. You're trying to build the argument that if we, if we don't follow what we've done in the past, that it's going to lead to turmoil, and I just don't think that that's the case. I think there's other ways that we could, you know, save money if we wanted to put money, set money aside, and that was the goal, then let's put it in the budget and make that the goal, as opposed to sort of sneaking it in, you know, another way. So, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this is a, tonight was, is really a formality. A lot of discussion. The only real discussion that should be had is we should just have inquired as to the three counselors who voted against the budget we had, we adopted, asked them if they were willing to entertain changing their mind. It would have saved an hour. But I want to ask one question because we, we get into these discussions, I've been here a long time, and I'll meet just tonight. And, um, years ago, I, I made the point that arguments between the administration and count, the council regarding use of reserve funds as well as other types of decisions, similar decisions, come down to a matter of scale. It's never a matter of philosophy because if it was, we would never use anything out of the reserve. It's a matter of scale. So, one year, it's, it's irresponsible, another year it's not, and this, that, and the other thing. Uh, when it was three million dollars and I said, can we do four and a half? I was, you know, no, my goodness gracious, we can never do that. Don't you ever do that. Our credit rating will be shot. And then two years later, it was five million. And I said, can we do six? No. I mean, it's just, it's a back and forth thing, you know? But I do, I want one clarification, Mr. Sena. Right now, just to clarify, you had made comments earlier that, you know, the credit agencies would love to see eighteen million dollars in, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Unappropriated reserves? I just drew a blank on a word, I apologize.
Unreserved.
Just to, you know, on the, the free mon- the, the extra money in the, in the reserve account. And we're down to fourteen. Is that before or after this year's budgets, the amount that we're applying in this year's budget?
That's the June thirty, last audits number.
So, does the new budget make that number eight? Theoretically, since we're all talking about the budget is really just a roadmap?
No, because it goes, it won't, the reclassification happens at the end of the year because, you know, we've used seven point nine, is in their reserve now, now that comes out and whatever you're coming in goes. So, it's...
Right.
I can't tell you what it is right now because it...
Right.
It happens at the end of the year when we're getting ready to report it.
Okay, but one, one could say, since a very important driver of the administration's point of view is the importance of, of sufficient reserves, which I wholeheartedly agree with, we, we got into the argument that it should be eighteen in order to keep the credit agencies real comfortable. But we're closer to fourteen right now and that's alarming. Yet we just passed a budget taking six more out of it. I would just think the budget making would cause everybody to be alarmed. My point is, we, you know, we, we're all doing the same thing. It's just a matter of scale. It really is, just a matter of scale. So, what was the most important thing? This year, um, you know, there was an effort made on the part of a majority of the council and, and it was symbolic, don't kid yourself. Symbolically, we were able to say to the community, no tax increase. Even a little slight reduction, is it going to make a big difference in your day to day life? No. But goodness gracious, the, the, just the, the optics of raising taxes was, was disturbing to say the best to so many people. So, we were able to say, you know what? Mayor got us pretty darn close with his way of budgeting, um, and we can take it a little farther doing the same exact thing, only with a little bit of different scale, so we can just simply tell the people of Wallingford, we can get you to no taxes this year. We appreciate, we know how you feel. And it's going to be tough to, you know, to run this budget for the next year to make sure we don't, maybe we don't spend everything because that's how it ends up working every year. Um, um, we've got to do a hell of a better job of getting our grand list up. Maybe the revenues will start to increase. You know every department head is going to be told to play it tight, uh, this year so that they don't spend everything potentially. And hopefully we, well, we won't even use a dime of that amount and it'll go right back in. Maybe it'll be, we'll put back seven and we'll start to build up, that fourteen will be fifteen again. But these are all just, and I don't want to use the term shell game because that implies it's, it's, it's irresponsible or, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's a fake thing. It's not. It's everybody using their best judgment. But I don't think it's fair to anyone to, you know, give, put anyone in a position where you're saying, eh, you're, you're putting too much at risk. You go with the council budget, ah, man, our, our bonding is going to be at, put at risk, it's going to cost too much to buil- to buy this, it's going to be too much to do that. We're pretty darn close here. Um, and I probably have nowhere to go with this, just other than to say, there are three counselors that didn't vote for our budget. We acted as a council, I've said before that no counselor has any authority to do anything. We're only a unit. We acted as a council to pass our budget. So, the question tonight was, um, were those who voted against that budget when we took the vote, how did they look at it? Do they take the mayor's veto, um, as being more important than the, uh, the majority will of the council, which they're a part? Or do they feel strongly enough that in their vote against the budget in the first place that, you know, they still want to, they won't override the veto? And I didn't intend that to be a criticism. I mean, that's just, that's really how it is. Everybody's, uh, operating on principle here. But however we go, our bond rating's not at risk. And it, it's not, it's, it's not, we shouldn't be worried about that. We're not going to have six million dollars in our undesignated reserves next year. We're not going to have eight. We're not going to spend six point four million dollars of our reserve funds in our operating budget. It's not going to happen. It's become a budget, a budgeting tool. It's become a budgeting process. It's the way it's been done for almost thirty years to budget the way we budget. So, no one's doing it irresponsibly, nobody is doing it in a sneaky way. Uh, it's just, this is how certain people feel it works best. We're trying to do things a little differently. And here's where we are. So, I'm sorry, there you go.
Counselor Fishman.
Mayor, in your letter, um, your veto letter, the last paragraph, you talk about the multi-year interception of the electric division contribution to cap and nonrecurring. Um, and I believe you used, um, an adjective, well, the multi-year interception, which would imply that there's a problem with what was done in the past. Is there a problem with, um, what we did in the past with regard to that moving of money?
I see it as a problem, yes.
Well, no, I, like, uh, not philosophical, but, uh, was there some impact to that particular budget or...
Well, ultimately, there will be an impact in the capability of the cap and nonrecurring to handle the projects we would like to handle. Uh, we're, we're taking money out, we're not allowing money to get in there, which means that there's less that can be done with the cap, capital nonrecurring.
So, what particular...
We're now, we're now using money that was, and we had followed a pattern of making that available for capital projects. It now, some of it is being utilized for operational purposes. Uh, that's not illegal, but I, I question whether that's a good route. I mean, we have, Wallingford has been blessed with a healthy capital nonrecurring fund and able to accomplish a lot of things with that money over the years. And sometimes you have to build the money up and then you have the money that will handle a project. But once the money isn't going into that fund, you become far more constrained by it, by the lack or the, the difference, and, uh, you can't accomplish what you wanted and now you're relying upon that for operational purposes when really it was intended to be for capital purposes.
So, I know that's all anecdotal, but is there a specific project that is not going to get completed based upon our prior utilization of that financial vehicle?
That, that would be impossible to...
Okay, so the answer is no, there's nothing...
No, no, the answer is not no.
Okay, so...
It's impossible to define what you want. You, you see using money for an operational purpose versus a capital purpose as one and the same. I don't.
I don't? No, I never said that.
And a capital program is by its nature, must be multi-year.
Agreed.
So, once you have less money there, it will constrain your ability to use it in a future year.
We have never used a diversion of cap and nonrecurring money for an operating expense. You can't give me an example of one. We never have. We have never utilized, we've purposely only used the cap and nonrecurring monies in the diversionary process for a capital expenditure. We've never used it for an operational expenditure. So, um, you know, that was the, you can't identify one. The, the reason why we've done it in this fashion is because we've, in the past, run up against the wall that once the money's there, it's very difficult to get it out without your request.
And, and why would we want to get it out? That's what I'm talking about.
Well, we would want to get it out...
It's a lack of discipline to say capital money should be used for a capital purpose.
It's a lack of discipline to overestimate the budget for a project. And the example I give you is the cap and nonrecurring account where Mr. Sena reported to us a mere few weeks ago, it was approximately one point three million dollars in that account that was unappropriated, unexpended overages from prior projects. It is, it is pure surplus just sitting there. So, that accumulation of money, to, to your credit, occurred and it sat there. So, all we did in this budget is we utilized that as a credit and we prevented certain money from going there to duplicate that money. So, I'm just trying to figure out in this third paragraph of the, of your letter, the actual negative impact, um, of doing that because we have...
The negative impact is that there is less money in that capital account to spend on capital projects.
Well, but all of the money that's in the capital account, I, I would say less than the total of the money is already budgeted. So, we have a budget. We have the seven, the six or seven year budget and every year we, we take the next year and we attribute that to the approximately two million dollars from the electric division that's going to be utilized in that account. Never have you come to us and said, this was budgeted in the cap and non, um, because of something, there's not enough money for that and therefore we can't do the project. So, when you say there won't be enough money for the project, I've never seen that. And because we have the annual flow in from the electric division, I, I don't know how that would be possible. I mean, the paving projects that are in there, we, we never, uh, use up the money that we attribute. I think it's five hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, but anyway, I'm just trying to figure out what the goal is here. And I could come up with three things. To protect the bond rating, well, that's a laudable goal, but if that was the case, then you wouldn't be taking any money from reserves. You'd be sharpening the pencil on expenditures. You'd be saying, we aren't reasonably going to get five police officers in this budget year. five police officers in this budget year, this coming budget year. So maybe you're going to get three. You know, you, you look at things like that. If that was the legitimate goal, but that's not what we're seeing. We're seeing millions of dollars taken from reserves to pad the budget. So the next thing is to increase the reserves. Now, that may be a goal, but please say it. I mean, but that's never been said. The other thing I come up with is to, to cut taxes, which the budget that was adopted cuts taxes. So of the three goals, unless there's some other goal that's looking to be achieved here, I, I don't know why you wouldn't adopt, um, and override the veto. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Allinson.
Well, saddle up because this is not going to earn me friends. And, um, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of disagreement with what I'm about to say. And frankly, I, I don't know that I care. As an outsider, the budget workshops, as they were conducted, leave a lot to be desired and frankly, are kind of a joke. We all task the departments to come here and answer questions and I'm sure they're happy when we are engaged in the process creating value for them in the time that they're dedicated, dedicating away from activities and families outside of their normal workdays. We get our books about three to four weeks before the workshops. Mine even went to Canada with me. That is the opportunity for the council to work with the departments and administration to allocate changes to the mayor's budget. It's our opportunity to work collectively and legally within FOIA to collaborate on a solution if we disagree. Instead, one councillor vague texted me and asked me for my questions after all of the workshops were over. Then I chose not to engage for my own reasons and I was lumped in as uncompromising and novice to the role. One day you'll be on our side, they say. I've managed larger budgets than that of this town and I've always come within point zero eight percent or less of my projection through teamwork. My role as a new councillor, and as I see it, was to observe and understand this process and frankly, my observation is that it's not a team process, especially since everyone thinks that they can do all the things better. We've heard a lot about bipartisanship. Um, it's a cloak draped over this particular conversation where two factions of people who hope to one day be mayor work together to claim that they've saved the taxpayers' money while tisking the three of us who would oppose for our irresponsibility, irresponsibility and loyalty. I'd argue this. I was not and am not opposed to keeping taxes stagnant in an effort to not further depend on the reserves. Apparently though, if I could not compromise to do all the things that so-called bipartisanship wanted, I wasn't compromising. When I offered a compromise to take out the extra dependence on the reserves and leave all else alone despite my disagreement overall and depending on ARPA, I was told that wasn't a compromise either. So I think we might need to reevaluate the definition of compromise. Next, I offered that we could take the million already allocated and transferred, which remains unspent, to the pool to offset this compromise that was also not enough. Instead, we allocated money further to the pool that doesn't actually cover the twenty twenty projected costs. We have been told that we can bond the rest, but let's risk the reserves. I used, I used to teach, uh, credit scores to high school students because I've had my fair share of credit card debt, had to be bailed out a couple of times by family, which I repaid at far lower interest rates, fortunately enough for me. I've been in a position where I had no money. I had nowhere to go. I couldn't get more credit. I couldn't get credits to consolidate, credit cards to consolidate at a lower rate. And so I had to depend on the people around me to bail me out. As a town, I'm sure that it doesn't work that way and I'm actually absolutely positive it doesn't work that way. However, let me explain why, from my view, I believe that we need to keep money in the reserves at this, you know, at as low of a rate, or as, as much money as is responsible in the reserves as possible. When I had no money and I had high credit card debt at one point, I think it was twenty thousand dollars, I, um, I had no way of consolidating those loans. Nobody would give me a loan because I had no money. I had, I didn't have twenty percent of twenty thousand dollars in order to, or ten percent of twenty thousand dollars to prove that if something happened, I wouldn't be able to repay my debts. I imagine it works the same way when we're talking about trying to borrow money on a municipal level. Obviously, I'm talking maybe twenty thousand dollars and, um, the town is talking maybe twenty million plus when we account for some other projects like the pool. We can all consider ourselves armchair economists, but the reality is that none of us know and some of us are just risk aware, or risk adverse, sorry. I refuse to participate in campaigns that are virtue signaling. I've seen the shame posts on Facebook groups. I agree with Jason that Democrats get a bad rap for spending money. I'm not here to talk about political stereotypes, nor have I done so in the past. The bottom line is that had we worked with the administration truly absent our own interests to come up with an acceptable plan during the allocated and legal workshops, perhaps we could be proud of our work as a team. Perhaps we wouldn't be in this situation right now. You don't get to villainize those of us who would participate more wholeheartedly if this wasn't actually about self-interest. Onto Board of Ed, which was my role immediately before this one and one that a few councillors here have held before. I'm not sure how anyone would know that cutting Board of Ed budget wouldn't cut services. They're already reducing their services to cut many other expenses that they, and they have just entered into a new transportation contract, which will cost us, the town, the Board of Ed, quite a bit more relatively speaking and hopefully justifiably in the coming years. Additionally, orchestrating their further, orchestrating their further dependence on their own reserves as they enter another year of heightened social emotional issues and teachers have more challenges teaching could result in the students not receiving the services that they need. The problem is, we simply do not know. I don't always agree with the mayor, but I can say that as a new councillor, I'd rather support someone who's been in the office for almost forty years than people who refuse to take that expertise and the positive things he's done for the town into account as they buck for a seat that isn't open yet. Thank you.
Seeing no further hands on the council. Any comments from the public? Mr. Glidden saw your hand first.
Uh, Mike Glidden, Pomeroy Avenue. Um, whoops. Bathfitter's on. Um, I have a question for the Chair, to the Town Attorney. Uh, just for procedural question. So, um, obviously it kind of sounds like there's, the same vote is about to occur that did about two weeks ago, a six-three vote, uh, with three councillors, uh, opposing the override of the veto. Um, if this were to occur, is today the date that the budget would be adopted?
That's my understanding, yes.
So then therefore, if a, if a citizen had an objection to the passing of this budget, they could file a petition forcing a referendum on the budget, correct? It would be from thirty days from today, should this be adopted by the council?
I don't believe the Charter permits taking a referendum on the budget.
Could you verify that?
I, I could verify that, but the three of us sitting here agree on that.
I, I would ask maybe through the councillors to pull out copies of your, of the Charter, if you have that, to see if that's possible. Because I think that, you know, i- in this current economy, I know that, as Jason said eloquently, in twenty-five dollars doesn't seem a lot. But I'll give an example of, you know, a, a senior citizen where twenty-five dollars, while your electric rates are going up, while your food, uh, cost for groceries are going up, twenty-five dollars is a lot of money for someone who owns a home. And, you know, I commend the planning and zoning commission. They adopted, uh, recently the Affordable Housing Plan. And one of the things, the reason why I want to tie those two together is you're pricing the elderly out of town. You're, you're pricing individuals, and like I said, it's twenty-five dollars this year, fifty dollars next year, with inflation, et cetera. It, it snowballs. I, I, I understand, Councillor Allison, your, your, uh, your opinion. However, I think it's irresponsible that you're passing a budget with it, with an increase and the harm it will do to the seniors, to those with limited incomes, et cetera. You're just, you're missing the target. You're missing the goal. Um, I also just urge, take a look, see if this is subject to a referendum and if so, I guess in thirty days we can find that, we can figure that out. Thank you.
Section nine, power of referendum. The electors shall have the power to approve or reject at a referendum as herein provided any ordinance or resolution, including an ordinance or other action appropriating or committing money, except a budget ordinance or ordinance or resolution appointing or removing officials, transfers within an approved fiscal budget, specifying the compensation or hours of work of officials and employees authorizing the levy of taxes or fixing the tax rate. As I read that, uh, it's not allowed. Uh, Ms. Gross.
Just to clarify, the six councillors' proposed budget, um, that's being vetoed.
Name an address for the record, please.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
The Gross Long Hill Road.
Thank you.
Um, regarding that budget, is it a savings of a hundred and twenty-five dollars per household or twenty-five dollars per household?
I, I believe the analysis was the mayor's proposed budget increases the average by ninety-nine dollars. The council adopted budget reduces relative to last year's taxes, twenty-five dollars.
Change is a hundred and twenty-four, a hundred and twenty-four dollars. So it's really not twenty-five, it's really a hundred and twenty-four. Um, just wanted to clarify that. Um, if I could, um, a question for Mr. Senna through the Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, regarding positions, um, in this budget year, how many positions were, have been eliminated?
I don't know why that question's coming to me, but.
Okay, well, I, well, I know you do the budget. All the other financial questions are coming through you and I know, that's why I'm asking. I don't know where else to ask.
I believe, off the top of my head, two.
Okay, only two. Does that include the Director of Government TV?
Yes.
Okay, because I know you said you've added positions, but obviously you've also eliminated positions. So that could be potentially a net wash. So I just wanted to point that out in the budget. Regarding the way you proceed with developing the budget, can you kind of explain that a little bit? What do you, what's your base? What do you begin with?
When the budget starts, we send out letters to the department.
No, I don't mean that. I mean, okay, you send out letters to the department. Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Right, so then we, there's an expenditure number and the mayor and I go through and, you know, make changes that we see fit, then.
How are they basing those? What are they using to come up with those numbers? Are they, what are they looking at to arrive at those numbers?
What are the departments looking at?
Yeah.
They're, they're looking at what they need for the year.
Right, but how, what information do you give them to, to arrive at those numbers?
The mayor sends out a letter.
No, no, I, I know they send out a letter. But so I'm a department head, you send me a letter to do my budget. So what other information do I have to do my budget? What are you, what other paperwork? What other information are you giving me so that I know how to, um, prepare my budget and come up with my numbers? You must be giving me some financial data.
They get last year's, they, you know, they get the same columns that you get in the budget book.
So they're getting the previous year's budget is what they're using?
Yes.
Okay, so they're not looking, or so are they looking at? I mean, the budget from the previous year may not be an indication or any, uh, beginning point to develop a budget for the next year. So are they looking at actual expenditures and maybe projections out to see where they're going to arrive so that they can better sharpen a pencil to under, to, to develop a budget for their department that could be a little bit more fiscal?
I just sure would hope so.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I mean, because you talk about the budget and different things and it seems like, from what I'm hearing, every year, the budget, budget expenditures seem to be, exceed significantly what we actually spend every year. So I'm trying to peel that back to understand how you build the budget because it sounds like potentially every year, and I don't know what the numbers are. I don't pay that much attention necessarily. Every year, we're throwing back money into our general fund because we've budgeted for a significant expenditures, but inevitably that number, almost every single year, comes in less than anticipated. So with that being said, I guess, I'm thinking the budget process could be streamlined a little bit and maybe more realistic to what actually happens. And thus, the one point five million that the council has been asking to take out of it really is money that's probably going to go back in anyways. Um, I know you said that, um, regarding the projection for this year, you don't have a projection for how you're going to end June thirtieth because that's when the fiscal year ends, correct?
That is correct.
So we're basically at the end of May and we have no idea of how we're going to end the year?
That is correct.
So do we actually, um, prepare projections? I know in the financial world, usually we look at where we are, especially as we're getting close to the end of the year, and then we look at what expenses are, we anticipate in the next month to get an idea of how we're going to end the year.
We analyze what's being spent and where the accounts are. We do not deal in projections. Projections is just guessing.
I don't think it's guessing. Well, I'm not saying to guess. Projections are usually, here's our actual, right? And then we know that hanging out there, you said there's ten million dollars in Board of Education salaries that come in at the end of the year. So we add that to our expenditures, which really isn't the town budget, it's the Board of Ed budget, right?
It's part of.
Right, no, I know, I'm just saying.
Part of the general.
But they usually manage their budget separately and I'm just using this as an example. So that being said, you should know, based on previous payrolls, what, how, what your salaries are going to be between now and the end of June and other office expenses based on historical data. You should be able to, within reason, it's never an exact science, but you should be able to, within reason, project out what your expenditures are. And that being said, I don't think it's unreasonable that the council asks what you projected surplus should be, right? So I think that's very reasonable to ask. And as a citizen, I'm asking that. To actually come up with those numbers.
Well, that's your opinion and I'm, I'm telling you that it's not feasible to do.
I don't understand.
And I can give you a number and two weeks later it can be a completely different number.
I get it, but if it's, if it's that far, if it's that far off, then you're doing a poor job of projections. I know it's not going to be exact. But again, there's information out there that will allow you to come up with, in reason, that number. We all do it in the financial world. It's something that's done in every industry imaginable, in small business, large businesses, no matter what. That's how we, we budget and plan. So I guess, um, I just also want to say, because I'm guessing the three councillors that didn't, um, approve the suggested budget originally are the ones that are going to be not participating in that as, uh, and be, and going along with the mayor. So I do want to say again to the six councillors, to thank you very much for your time and your effort in working together in a day and age when you don't really see that going on. So I really applaud you guys for doing that and thinking of the citizens of the town of Wallingford. I truly thank you for being nonpartisan. I truly thank you for being nonpartisan in that process. Thanks so much.
Anyone else? Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I did not know about the $947,000, I didn't see, I didn't look at the budget book, it was brought up tonight, the $947,000 that the mayor had taken from ARPA and put into the budget. Through the chair to the mayor, I was under the impression you didn't want to take any money from ARPA, but there's a million dollars that you took for the town to balance its budget. So why not do it this year? Why is that?
I think Tim probably is in a better position to answer this than I am. I think Jim Bose at the time felt that revenue that we expected to lose perhaps because of COVID and a few other things would be eligible, and then it was determined, no, we couldn't do it. It was in the budget, I was not directly involved in those conversations, but essentially, it's gone nowhere.
That is correct.
So you can't use, you couldn't use that money for a project that the town wanted to do? Because to Attorney Fishbein's point, he was asking where that money was allocated. So you had A and B, so you had a million dollars, where was that million dollars being spent? So essentially, that million dollars could be spent anywhere in the budget, so you could have spent that money to pave a road, you could have spent that million dollars to do the pickleball courts, you could have taken that million dollars to do community pool, you could do any, whatever you want to do with it. You could have spent it if you want to, because those are allowable uses of ARPA money, and you put it in the budget.
Well, the rules changed by Treasury. These were the initial rules that came out, the final rules didn't come out until, I believe it was February of this year. The initial rules were confusing at best, but that, they came out in, they came out sometime in the spring of 2020.
March.
So, you know, at the time, that was, we were right on top of the budget, I think there was, I'm not sure what Jim's thinking was, but subsequent to that, the rules were in suspension, basically, and then the final copy finally came out this year. I, no, we weren't in a position just to take the money for other things. I know a lot of towns did a lot of things. Well, we're not a lot of towns, we're the town of Wallingford, and we look to do it right.
So what you were taking that money for, based on ARPA rules, was to make up for lost revenue? Yes, no? That's what, that was the intended purpose?
I believe that was his intended purpose.
Well, you're allowed to use that for lost revenue. Right? They didn't, ARPA didn't change those rules, you're allowed to use it for lost revenue, there's a formula to figure out, you're allowed to use it for lost revenue.
Mr. Senna, wasn't your point that that, we didn't have it by the end of the budget year last year?
You had the money by the budget year last year.
Your point was there was a $900,000 payment that we budgeted and didn't receive. Did I misrecord that?
So we knew we were getting the ARPA money, so, and this, you know, I'm speaking for Jim Bose, I don't know his whole methodology on how he came up with that.
This is a simple math question.
So, the money that we have now, we, you could take the $900,000 and stick it in that year's budget as revenue loss, but that's $900,000 you don't get to use on these other projects you've been dealing with.
Exactly, but the mayor had intent to use it that way, so why not, now you not use it that way? That was your intent back in April, or March or April of 20, or maybe even May, of 2021, so why not use that?
When we took the $10 million standard deduction, that took it out of play.
You just did that, though.
That's correct, but that, we didn't have the final rule until February of this year. At that point, they loosened up the whole thing on the, on the lost revenue issue and provided a $10 million figure. So if we had taken money for the other purpose, I don't think we would have been able to use the $10 million. You had to choose one or the other, so I'm glad that we didn't take the money for the lost revenue, because I do, I've been led to believe, and I didn't calculate it, but the Finance Department told me we wouldn't come close to the $10 million by lost revenue. So the town has benefited by having the $10 million. So it's, it's really good that we didn't make that choice, because we would have not been able to change it.
But you could have used it for...
We didn't calculate it, we, the consultant looked at it and said, it's not worth trying to do the calculation, it's not going to come near that number.
The point was then, but the money could have been used for other town projects. To Attorney Fishbein's, Fishbein's point was that if you're not allocating it for A to A, A can go to C, and it still would balance the budget then. It would be money, you wanted to spend that money for lost revenue. If you took that money and used it for another project, which was acceptable, the other, because it's not A to A, you could have spent other monies for another project, or for whatever you wanted to use it for.
That's what's happening in the ARPA fund. That's exactly what's happening.
I don't know.
We're not using the $9 million to balance the general fund, now you have the whole allotment to use on other projects.
It was $900,000, but, 947, but he, what I'm saying is, he wanted to balance the budget with it, meaning Mr. Mayor, so he could have, the mayor could have, you could have used it for a different project, a road paving, so the cap and nonrecurring, that money could have gone into another bucket, and the ARPA money could have been used to pay for that road, which is legitimate. And then you would have had not a potential $946,000 shortfall based on your budget from last year, and that's what you intended to use it for.
If we, my belief is, if we used it in the budget, then we would be not able to take $10 million, because you had one direction or the other. Either using it for, for lost revenue, or you're using it as a general allotment to be $10 million.
We're not on the same wavelength.
Well, I don't think we're going to agree, Bob.
No, no, not a question of...
You don't understand me, I don't understand you.
No, I understand exactly what you're saying. The question becomes, you have the $947,000 which you were planning on using for lost revenue, you didn't use it for lost revenue, but it's in the budget, so we're going to be short the 947. You could use that $947,000, pave a road, do school, do basketball courts, pickleball courts, fix up a park, whatever you want, you could use it for that. And then other money could have gone for something else. The money that was budgeted for that, because it's not, it's, A isn't going to A, you're just, as Mr. Controller Senna said, he gets a bill in, the money's in the budget, he pays the bill. It's in a bucket.
Well, the difficulty here is, the lost revenue was never calculated.
We don't need lost revenue. Take, throw lost revenue out of the picture, Mr. Mayor.
But that's the guise under which apparently it was being appropriated. It was never calculated, so we weren't entitled to use it until we calculated something, and when we saw the final rules, $10 million was a better situation for the town. I do not understand what you're trying to say.
Okay, other, we'll use Meriden. Meriden took money out of ARPA, and they, last year, allowed kids to go to camp with that money. You could use that money for whatever you wanted to use it for, as long as it was legitimate use. So no, you weren't using it for lost revenue, it was in your bucket of money. When you took out $947,000 out of your bucket to pave a road, you can say, that's the ARPA money, and then you're done. Then you spent it and you balanced your budget.
And that is a completely different scenario. We are now involved with needing applications to find out what the amount of need is for people who are disadvantaged, businesses, et cetera, due to ARPA. So we're avoiding appropriating funds from ARPA until we have that information. We took money out of this budget with the view that, you know, ARPA funds could be used for those things, but we are not appropriating ARPA funds in this budget.
That being said, we are way off topic.
Right, no, no, it's not to balance the budget, you could use that money right now.
We're out of time.
That money is going for a road, and there's a million dollars of it, maybe one of the counselors can explain it to the mayor.
Mr. Gross, please sit down.
Thank you.
All right, we've exceeded the public comment time. Mr. Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just to be clear, because, you know, we were talking about the $900,000, in this budget, the mayor uses ARPA funds, $585,000, I think it is, to buy machinery. So I just want that to be clear. On the issue of projections...
Can I, so he's not using, so he pulled those expenditures out of the budget recommending that ARPA funds to buy that, so we're going to have to come back at some point and ask for that, those projects to get appropriated out of the ARPA fund.
Well...
So those projects are, were cut by the mayor with the recommendation that we use ARPA funds, but during this budget process, we are not appropriating those to be spent with ARPA funds.
So that's news to myself and perhaps the majority up here. A document is presented to us, when was it ever represented to us that if, if we had voted yes on the budget, right, we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't be here? On May 10th, nine yes votes. Where in here does it say that if you approve this budget, you're not getting everything that's in this budget?
I believe my letter regarding the budget indicates that we would need to appropriate ARPA funds, it would be a separate issue, it does not show up as revenue in the budget, right?
Correct.
There are no funds on the revenue pages showing ARPA.
But once again, there is no funds in the revenue page showing ARPA, but you've got $900,000 from this budget that you could have carried over for those expenditures. But I'm looking at your letter, and I remember looking at those items, and I remember it coming up, because it's similar to CRA, right? It's similar. And I thought there was an indication that there should have been something written next to those items in the budget book, you know, ARPA, which is the same way that we do CRA. So what portion of the letter says that there'd have to be a new, you know, because...
The letter cites, I believe, numbers one through six, key elements in the budget.
Okay, so...
It's item four.
Okay, item four, consider fire station upgrade for ARPA funding. Okay, so that's the letter, and the letter is dated April 1. So it doesn't say there'd have to be a new appropriation.
It says, consider ARPA funding. It does not say that it is being funded, it says, consider that. Because that would be a separate action, other than if, if ARPA appeared as a revenue source, and we were appropriating funds in the budget for that, it would appear as revenue on the revenue pages, it does not.
So the describing word you lead us to, consider, you're saying, because it says, consider, that that particular provision should be treated differently? Is that the position?
You know, Greg, you want to dance on the head of a pin, I don't want to dance on the head of a pin.
I want you to be fair with us.
And I am fair.
Where in this letter does it say that if this budget is adopted, that this is not part of the budget? It doesn't say that. You're saying, because it says, consider, that it's, we should infer from that that something else would have to be done. Is that, is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying that. If you want to torture it into a shape that it does not exist, that's your business. I'm telling you what it means and the way the budget was constructed. The revenue pages clearly do not contain any reference to ARPA.
And the letter doesn't say anything about another appropriation. So if one is to take that position, I would say that that is incorrect as well, because if you look at the paragraph, the one line prior to items one through six, it says, we ask for careful consideration of the following. Therefore, the term consider applies to all of those items on number six. So it's not different.
Okay, so Craig, you're telling me that you thought that we were taking over $500,000 from ARPA? How did that not show in the discussions regarding taking money for the pool or anything else? Never has that been...
That was part of the argument that night.
No, it wasn't.
Oh, yes, it was.
No, it was not.
Members of the public and members of this council said, Mayor, you have set the precedent by making part of your budget appropriation of ARPA dollars for the purposes of these items. That was said during that meeting, and nobody said, no, we're not doing that.
No, it did identify use of ARPA funds, but at the point money was discussed for the pool and other things, that was not reduced out of the amount available. Over $500,000 would have already been appropriated, and that was not mentioned as part of what was available. So someone must have understood that it hadn't been appropriated yet.
Sure. Mr. Senna, you said that you don't do projections. In the revenue line for taxes, is that a calculation of all taxable property in this town by the appropriate mil rate?
When I said I don't do projections, I don't do projections trying to guess where we're going to end up at the end of the year.
But there are areas of the budget that you would concede you do do projections.
The whole budget is a projection.
Okay, well, that was contrary to what I heard before, it's, it's somewhat of a projection. You are estimating where you're going to end up at the end of the year, revenue-wise and expenditure-wise.
Correct.
Okay, well, it's, so looking at the expenditure portion.
And just to clarify, the ARPA is a new fund, so we haven't spent any, that money came in and went into deferred revenue. We haven't spent anything, we actually got the first, you guys authorized the consultant, $25,000, we actually just got the first bill from them and paid that. So in the other motions that you made that night, the CRA funds are in there, so in that process, that's how the CRA funds get appropriated, but the ARPA wasn't included on those pages, so that's why, so in the budget, if you look at the mayor's column, the departments of the mayors, the mayor cut those items that he listed, please consider ARPA. So, I mean, we might, you know, maybe we didn't communicate the process properly, but the ARPA fund is all-in-one fund, so we're going to, you know, ARPA fund didn't get, nothing in ARPA got appropriated during this budget process, but that's the difference between the CRA and, and the ARPA funds. So in this budget, the mayor cut those items, and he's asking the council, at some point, that's how we're going to fund them. You guys don't have to, you know, if you choose not to, then they just don't get funded.
So why does that have to be handled differently? It's going to come in, is it the money going to come in, in this budget? I mean, in fact, we have a lot of the money already.
You're, you're asking, why is the ARPA being handled differently?
Yes.
I think that, that answer is readily apparent. The issue is what the federal government has indicated, our priorities for ARPA, we are involved in a process of approving applications in order to find out what the needs are in the community, and those, those have involved a lot of time... And those, those have involved a lot of time and effort legitimately in order to undertake. So, we have not made, we, we wouldn't want to sneak things through that we're trying to fund with ARPA through other means when, you know, our direction has been, let's have applications. Other than hiring the consultant, uh, there's been no, no expenditure, to my knowledge, with, or appropriation regarding ARPA. That's, that's where we are. There's, there's nothing new about it.
And, and I seem to recall during the meeting that there was a motion made, or there was a discussion about putting the $275,000, I think it was this $275,000, into contingency and not buying the ambulance until we figured out the fire department situation. Wasn't, wasn't that the discussion that I was here for?
I don't recall that discussion.
And I thought there was a discussion about that we didn't have to do that, because the administration would cooperate with regard to something along those lines, that we didn't have to, to move that money.
I believe that was the-
I, I recognize the motion was withdrawn, but that, that was part of the discussion. And it's the same $275,000 of these ARPA dollars that we were discussing that night. So, wouldn't the response have been at that time, that is a discussion for another, we, we aren't doing that in this budget, it's a recommendation for another time? I mean, I believe Counselor Marone had partially made a motion, and then we had a bit of discussion, and then it was withdrawn. So, I was of the understanding, and, and, you know, I don't want to speak for others, that as part of this budget, those things were being purchased. So, now what I'm hearing is an ambulance. Important thing, is being balanced on other concerns, which, I, if, if that's the philosophy, I, I don't agree. I, I would have the ambulance purchased if the administration is the, has determined that's appropriate. I don't know why we wouldn't do it in this budget. We can do it in this budget, utilizing the criteria. So, the feds have given us that criteria. We have identified what we can use it for. The administration has made a recommendation. I don't understand why it isn't part of this, but so be it. Thank you.
We can, we could, the way it is now, we wouldn't even have to wait till July 1st. We can come to the next meeting and ask for $275,000 to be appropriated from ARPA for an ambulance next week.
Actually be in three weeks. There being no further hands or comments on the council. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
No, no.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
No.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Zervoni?
No. The, uh, motion requiring a supermajority has failed. Can I get a motion to go into executive session per item number nine?
Mr. Chairman, I move to go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, section 1-225F and 1-206B to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Town of Wallingford versus Maria Davidson.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of going into executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Kindly clear the council chambers. Call the meeting back to order. Can I have a motion to come out of executive session, please?
So, moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of coming out of executive session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council back in public session. Can I have a motion on item 10, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we settle the matter as discussed in executive session.
Is that the motion you're looking for, Attorney Farrell? Yep, okay. So, there's a motion for settlement. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none. Motion passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I mean, we all can stay.
I'm leaving.
All right, I'll adjourn the meeting.
It's the last time you'll do that.